Approval, AEP informed us that they had funded a larger hazard and risk assessment for the Bow Valley. In general, this was welcome news as it would ensure consistency across the entire basin. It would inform provincial policy more directly and also inform potential mitigation plans which would be consistent with other communities. That was going to take some time and has taken some time and will be some time yet. So we felt there was a need for information in the short term to be used in emergency planning. And proposed a reduced scope to confirm the capacity of the Dyke system. Determine the flow rate at which the system capacities exceeded and where that may occur. And to develop an emergency response plan to address flood stages beyond that capacity. This is the update from AEP provided in March suggesting that a draft hazard assessment will be completed later in the year. From there, there's still significant work to be done to finalize that hazard report. And then assess the risk to the community for that range of return periods that they study. And more work beyond that to determine any potential need for policy changes or mitigation. To inform the emergency planning for the reduced scope, McIlhany completed the Bow River flood modeling report in January 2016. And an emergency planning support memo in October of 2016. The scope of the study included developing what's called a 2D model. This is a hydraulic model that uses LiDAR data which is topographic information obtained using laser technology from helicopter. And that gives quite an accurate topography. They also use traditional survey methods to get the river bottom using boats. And the Dyke system along the river using traditional survey. With this, they prepare a model. Computer model that considers potential flow paths for various river flood stages. Now these aren't tied to any return period. They're just numbers that were selected based on engineering judgment. We know that Dykes were designed for approximately 700 cubic meters per second. And so we considered a range of flood stages up to double that flow rate. The output of the model is then used to determine probable flood locations and impacted critical infrastructure like access roads, bridges, utilities, and emergency response facilities. The second memo focused on actions that could be taken by the town to protect responders, the public, and this critical infrastructure during flood events. This included modeling different approaches to intervention on the Dyke. So using modular barriers on the Dyke system amongst some other considerations. As a result of this work, we now have a good understanding of the expected behavior of the Bow River for these various flood stages. And when we receive forecasts now from Alberta Environment, two, three days you'll be expected to get, based on their models, they could say, you're expected to get 500 cubic meters per second. We now have quite a good understanding of what that means physically and then have based, use that understanding as the basis for our planning work. I'll turn it over to Mr. Burt to provide an overview of emergency preparedness. And that'll be followed by a presentation by Mr. Kamir on the emergency planning work.
Can I just ask a couple of questions to your portion of the report? Just curious, just curious really. The river bottom study you mentioned is done with boats. So is it literally like they go stick poles in the water every 100 meters or something and see where the bottom is?
Exactly, they take a cross section and they matched up closely with cross sections that were done by Alberta Infrastructure at the time. Back when the original Dyke planning was done. So they looked to match up. And in cross section, then you can see the river profile or river cross section and compare how it's changed over time. It matches up quite closely with the original prof- or contours of the river and the capacity of the river is what they found.
Oh really, so it hasn't changed that?
No significant changes, no.
That's interesting. The Flyer Fisher people would tell us differently.
There, there may be some localized changes, but in terms of the general capacity throughout the channel, it was fairly consistent.
Okay, and one other question, in the study findings, the modeling shows the Dykes get overtopped. It flows between 700 and 800 cubic meters per second, which I know is quite high. But is that in isolated locations when you say the Dyke gets overtopped? Is that like along the length of the Dyke or just in?
It's in specific locations. So based on the flow rate, different locations are expected to be overtopped. Both on the left bank and the right bank. Generally speaking, the capacity is similar throughout the system. But those locations were identified as the relative low points. And where first overtopping could be expected.
I remember after the 2013 event, your department identified, I think, three places where the Dyke had overtopped a little bit, is that?
There weren't any specific locations where it overtopped. There were locations where it appeared to be quite close to overtopping. It's interesting, for example, we had directed some intervention on the golf course to raise up a section of Dyke. What we found through this study is that the golf course reach isn't one of the first overtop. And it's because even though it appeared to be quite close to the top of the Dyke system, the river's so wide there. Maybe up to 500 meters wide in some points, which is many multiples of the width in some of the narrower sections. A 10 centimeter increase in height there is quite a lot of flow. And so while it appeared that might be one of the first places to overtop, it actually isn't. And so the model was able to show us where we could expect it to.
Great, thank you. Councilor Stanford?
Thank you, Worship. Mr. Osarte, you mentioned that there's a model. Now, does the model show different variations of where the water goes when it reaches different amounts of water overtopping? So once, once the water overtops, it's probably going to do a pattern, right? Some sort of, it's going to follow some sort of pattern?
Yes.
Do you have maps that show that?
We do, yes.
Okay, and those aren't available to the public in any way?
No, we've, we've kept those maps as part of our emergency preparedness. We have decided not to show them for a couple of reasons. Those maps aren't tied to any science per se. We've picked arbitrary flow rates, ran the model, and it shows an area that's inundated. So for example, 1,000 cubic meters per second or 1,200 cubic meters per second. When the province does their study, what they'll determine is for a 500-year return period, what is the flow rate? And that might be 800 cubic meters per second. For a thousand-year return period, what's the flow rate? That might be 1,000 cubic meters per second. So because ours isn't tied to science, it's not going to be used for any policy. Really, the only purpose of those maps is to prepare us for a range of eventualities. We get a phone call from AEP and they say you can expect in three days that it'll be 1,200 cubic meters per second. At that point, we're now prepared to respond. But we want to avoid confusion with the community between the mapping that we've done for these arbitrary flow rates. And the mapping that will be done by the province based on actual hazard. Or the mapping that's done by the province subsequent to that for policy. And so having a range of different maps out there could be confusing. And it could also, we don't know, perhaps these aren't even realistic flood stage events. And so we don't want to create a perception that there's a, there is a real or a high risk of flooding in some of the areas that the model might show as being flooded. So for now, what we've done is combined the impacts into areas. And that's shown in the map that's attached to the report. And it says, based on the work that we've done and the emergency planning that has been subsequently done. There's a lot of areas, and it's not very specific, it's just a bunch of shaded areas that could either be flooded, have groundwater impacts, or be impacted by flooding such that their access is cut off or their utilities are impacted. Or the ability to respond to, to emergency calls is impacted. And so these are areas that might be evacuated. Or it might be a combination of those things happening to the same location. So these are areas that could be affected by emergency response or flooding. And we've just kept it general because we don't want to have that confusing, emergency-specific information being mixed with the actual science and the policy mapping that will come through AEP.
Mr. Farquhar, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I would just add to that, because we are waiting for AEP to complete their work. So this, this mapping that Mr. Osarte is referring to was an interim step. And it's essentially, we're using it to inform our emergency preparedness, but it remains interim and draft at this point. We're waiting for the province to complete their work. And then once the provincial work is complete, then we'll have a more complete picture. And then we'll be able to make a determination at that point whether or not these maps and these models remain relevant, whether changes are required. And at that point, there will be a process for defining what will be released to the public.
So there's a chance that our maps are not in alignment with what's being produced by the province right now?
It's not, sorry, it's not a question of in alignment. The province hasn't done their work, has not completed their work yet. So this is interim work that we have done to bridge the gap between when the province will complete their work. So that we are able to model scenarios and therefore respond should we get an event prior to the province completing their work.
Right, so this, this basically shows that the whole bottom of the Bow Valley is vulnerable, right? This map that everything could be affected by water?
Which, which is very important to, to understand. So that we can plan emergency response. The civic center is within that affected area and this is currently our ECC for, for our primary ECC. So thinking through the fact that a lot of critical infrastructure could be impacted is important when you're doing emergency preparedness. However, the province may, may do a study that looks at up to a thousand-year return period. That could have flood staging that's significantly lower than what we've actually identified here. So their flood thousand year might be 1,000 cubic meters per second. We've now gone beyond that to say, from strictly from an emergency preparedness point of view, what would we do if that phone call ever came?
But it may change because their maps might be different than our maps at some point.
The, the physical hazard doesn't necessarily change. A thousand cubic meter per second event will create, as long as the modeling has been done accurately, will create the same inundation mapping. The provinces will just be tied to science and return periods and be used for policy and mitigation decisions. Whereas this is strictly being used for emergency response.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burt?
So just wanted to take this opportunity to provide you with a brief update as to what's been happening with emergency preparedness over the last few months. There's been a number of exercises that we've had a chance to participate in. So the photo on the screen came from the provincial disaster exercise known as EMX 17. So it was a three-day exercise in Calgary that I got to participate in. Interesting, when I showed up, anybody asked if, if anyone could scribe. So I went from the Director of Emergency Management at the Town of Kenmore to the scribe at EMX 17, to the Ops Section Assistant, to the Ops Section Chief, when the Ops Chief ended up getting the flu. So it was interesting to see how that progressed. It's a great opportunity for myself and other team members from Fire Rescue that are part of Canada Task Force. Great learnings that come from that group. A few weeks ago, Banff did their Dangerous Goods Release exercise. So myself, Robin Denage, and our Fire Rescue team had an opportunity to participate there. So we took out our instant command post and trailer, set that up. Our, you'll see on the next screen, our mesh camera network. And again, we had the opportunity to participate in the ECC. So I got to participate as an evaluator and Ms. Denage's introduction into the ECC world. There have been exercises or meetings over the last few weeks with our Ops teams. So our planning, engineering, and public works teams specifically looking at our updated plans and maps. Our Fire Rescue team has been out on the creek banks and the rivers, again, reviewing those maps in terms of a response plan. And we conducted a mini, I called it ICS 10 and an ECC exercise just last week with the management team. So we ran through a mock situation and scenario of it was, it was Thursday, last Thursday. Here's the predicted flow rate from Alberta Environment and Parks from their Bow River Flood Forecast Center. And we're predicting a flow rate of X. What do we start doing to plan? And it was really interesting to see the ECC team shift from regular roles and responsibilities to putting on their, their ICS Emergency Coordination Center hat. And even today, we were at a planning meeting about Canada Day. And we're running the Canada Day parade as an emergency event. So the ICS world works for anything from planning a wedding to running a flood. So again, things today like setting up an incident action plan, radio communications plan, et cetera. From a training perspective, we put on some water safety training. So in 2013 and in subsequent years, we've had what I would call inside workers out taking a look at our creek flows, looking around culverts, which is a substantial safety risk if you don't know what you're doing. So we, one of our members of Fire Rescue put on a basic safety water awareness training. We conducted radio training. There's a basic emergency management course going on in this room next week. Our public works team fired up the sandbag filling machine and filled some sandbags. The generator was tested. So there's a bunch of, quite a bit of stuff that's been going on. In terms of our relationships, we're lucky to be part of the South Central Emergency Management Committee Group, which is Calgary and surrounding areas. So we meet quarterly from an emergency management perspective and it's about best practices, training, policy. And myself and Mr. Kamir had an opportunity to participate in a TransAlta flood preparedness session within the last month. So it was pulling out the manuals from TransAlta. Here's what happens if we give you a call, if something is going on, and what do we want to do from a training perspective moving forward. When you saw the last map, you may have seen some zones that were included in there. So we have an evacuation plan that was recently updated. So each one of those zones has corresponding maps, has a kit that goes with it, so if we need to go door-to-door. And most recently, our municipal emergency management plan was updated. So all of our key contacts were updated through Protective Services. So absolutely critical when it's 2 o'clock in the morning and you're looking for a supplier or you're looking for a contact to ensure that we've got the right numbers in there. So a lot of stuff that's been going on behind the scenes. Just wanted to talk a little bit about equipment. So you may have heard me speak about the mesh network or what I call is the camera network. So the image on the right is one of our cameras that was set up during the Banff exercise. We have four of the cameras that will work in an environment, feeds back into the instant command post or the trailer, the big red trailer. And then that can be live streamed back into an ECC or another location. So it provides that situational awareness. So the picture that you see on the left-hand side was the live stream coming from the instant command post feeding back into the Banff ECC to again, give us that situational awareness. This can and will be used if we see a large weather system that's rolling in. So we will set these up along some of our creeks at the debris net so it's not putting responders at risk. And then we, you know, are getting the real-time updates from that. The other thing that we're going to use it for is Canada Day. So again, an opportunity to set up our equipment, utilize it, but it also provides us with that situational awareness. If something's happening on the event, we can see what's happening. And it could be something as small as the parade is backing up for some reason, to someone's gone missing, to storing and recording that for a short period of time. If, you know, worst-case scenario, there was some sort of police-related incident as well. So really dynamic and interesting to see that actually up and operational and working. Some other small things that have been happening, and I call them our inside worker packs. So if I ask one of the staff to go out and monitor creeks and it's pouring rain, we're providing them with a pack with some basic supplies in there, food, water, communications, poncho, et cetera. So those are being developed and they'll be ready to go by the end of this week. And they're just ongoing maintenance with all of our emergency response equipment. I mentioned the sandbag machine and generators and pumps and a bunch of other stuff. So that's kind of a high level as to what's been going on in my world, in the emergency management world over the last few months.
It's quite a bit.
You know, this stuff's fun. I enjoy this stuff, so.
You don't look like you're not having fun.
No.
I'm just curious, the four cameras for the July 1st parade, where, where would you locate them?
So we're looking at locating them at key points along the parade route. And also recognizing that there's some public webcams that are along Main Street as well. So likely located on rooftops, so they wouldn't be damaged, knocked over.
Looking down.
Yep, looking down along the parade route. And if anyone's interested from council during the Canada Day event, I know that you'd be in the parade, but we'll be setting up our instant command post both before, during, and after the event, located behind Arts Place. So we will be, any staff member working with the Town of Kenmore will be checking in and checking out. So we have accountability on them. But if you want to see the inner workings of what's going on, I would encourage you to stop in. And we call it the big red box. Come and pop into the big red box and have a look.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. So just show up.
Just show up, you bet.
Do I need ID?
I think we know who you are.
Well, you've been a busy, busy person.
It's fun.
Yep. Councilor Sanford?
Thank you, Worship. So when you're mentioning that you're putting together some emergency packs, et cetera, is that out of that emergency preparedness budget that we had from before? Or how, how are you funding that? Is it through this project or?
No, so we have a, a emergency management budget contained within the Fire Rescue budget. It's a $45,000 budget, so it covers everything from supplies, training, contracted services, planned updates, et cetera. So that's where the funding comes from.
Okay, because we got some emergency planning money a few, couple of years ago, right?
Yes.
So those were things that are available to us on an ongoing basis?
So post-2013 flood, we applied and received a grant and received a number of pieces of equipment. That grant was closed, we've utilized all the funds, so yeah, this is just the operational component now.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
See no other questions for you, so Mr. Kamir?
Okay, so now I'm going to talk a little bit about, a little bit more about the emergency plans and maps that we've been producing for the Bow River. Just before I get to that though, just a little bit of an update on the high water monitoring. It's, we've started that a few weeks ago. And it's basically based on all the information that's available out there right now from AEP, from the Weather Forecasting Services, our own weather stations that we have up and running right now. And we're in touch with AEP river forecasters, not on a daily basis, but especially when there's storms incoming. Greg or I are talking with them quite a bit. Same thing also with our UBC weather forecasters. And basically, pretty much everybody here in this room, apart from maybe a few people, are receiving these, these updates. Including some external stakeholders now, some other folks have heard about this. So there's people from AEP Parks and also Epcor and a few different groups that are interested in receiving these. So it's, it's becoming a much wider audience than originally taught with this project. And the goal with this is to basically, well, the intent is to start early May when we see a river starting to rise. And also bring it all the way down to late June, early July, depending on situation. And later on also in the summer or in the fall if we see there's a large storm coming through.
Just, I, I think it's a really interesting report. I look forward to getting it. Two questions, is it actually available on our website or anything, or is it only by distribution list or?
So this report itself is actually only distribution list. However, we, it's kind of a summary of this is being posted on our website and also on our Facebook page.
Right, and, and is this something that somebody, you or somebody else, actually sits down periodically and fills in the blanks? Or is it automatic?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not at the point yet that we can just send a, yeah.
There's not an app for it?
No, not yet, not yet. There might be something to look at in the future.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. It's, it's been, a lot of people have been really thankful for those and lots of good information has come out of it, I think so.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Now to the emergency response map itself. So it's very similar to what we presented to, I believe it was Cougar Creek Cow or one of council update we did. Don't know if it was a year ago, two years ago, it's all blending together right now. But similar concept, 11 by 17 maps that are printed on waterproof papers, paper. And also on the backside, we have the actual plan. And the base, the, all the information is again, very similar to what we find on the Cougar Creek map, on the Stone Creek, Stoneworks, Three Sisters, XYZ, all the response maps that we have. Includes some key infrastructure we have in town, some critical infrastructure, all the potential locations for pedestrian closures, road closures, important monitoring information, location that we want people to go and take a look. Staging area, that's when we have external contractors coming in. Those are the locations that have been pre-selected. Master Point, that's when we need to do, or responders, responders need to evacuate, for example. We also have other important facility. And also on all the maps, we have information on the creeks or the, the river itself. On, you can see the blue chainage here with numbers. So people can actually refer back to where they are in the field. For example, I'm at kilometer four. So people back in the, the trailer could actually look back at the map and, you know, see the same thing. And then at the bottom here, it's a little bit cut off, but the, each critical infrastructure and key infrastructure, culverts, things like that, they, they have their own number, but also a little bit of a name attached to it. And this has been basically a collaboration between engineering, planning, Fire Rescue, parks, streets and roads. parks, streets and roads. Lots of people have been looking at these maps and trying to make sense of all this. And obviously based on the information that Andy talked about, Mr. Asarti talked about on the studies that have been completed already. The backside of these, these maps, as I showed, contains the, the actual plan itself. It's quite small here, but I'll talk a little bit more about, about some of the specifics of it. So the plan, all the plans are, including this one here, is it follows the incident command system. That's what Mr. Britt was talking about, some of the exercises that have been done and some of the training that have been done. That's on, gonna happen next week. It's also based on our current best knowledge of what could happen during a large flood event. The incident commander or the operations section chief may also make different decisions in the field based on actual conditions and if there's new information available to us at this point. So it's, you know, what we think could happen based on everything we know, but in the field it could be a little bit different. And that it's, it's quite useful again for people in the field and people in the ECC or the command trailer to be able to speak the same language by using the same maps and the same names, same numbers and all those things. The plan actually contains information regarding our priorities for responses, some protocols, also the hazards, our infrastructure priorities, what's really important, like the wastewater treatment plant, for example, and monitoring locations and also what kind of reporting we want people to, to get back. If they go on site, they see something specific that's, those are specific things like levels below the dike, if there's unraveling of riprap, things like that. It also focuses on response strategies and tactics for different levels of flow in Canmore. So those are the forecasted flows, flows that we're talking about early on, the 700, 800, 1,000, things like that. And includes like where to monitor, evacuations, closures, other actions considered, and also the, what we call the floodwater management, which I'm getting to right now. So for example, in this specific plan, we have the, what we call the level one, which is between 500 to 680 CMS cubic meters per second, where we're not expecting, expecting any flooding. However, we want to be ready. So we want to deploy equipment. We want to start monitoring culverts, bridge levels, water levels and bridges, all kinds of different things like that. When we switch to a forecasted level of 700 to 900, then there's a lot more things happening. That's when we could potentially have some overtopping. So we start getting to evacuation alerts, well, more than alerts at this point. It'd be, what's that? Order, that's the term I was looking for. And then potentially deploying some, some barriers along the dike system. And then once we reach level three, which is 1,000 CMS and above, we're expecting large flooding throughout the valley bottom. And that's when it's basically push the big red button, emergency, everybody gets out of there. We're trying to evacuate pretty much everybody in valley bottom kind of thing. And it's very minimal number of people we want to have in the valley bottom at this So when we're talking about protection of critical infrastructure, we could use some places cement log blocks, for example, at some of the pumps and lift stations. We can also use HESCO barriers for the, the Boer River dike. And there's also options to use a sandbag and also tiger dams for other infrastructure. So HESCO barriers are basically a very large kind of crates like that that are foldable. You extend them and then you basically use equipment to actually fill them with sand or rocks type material. And basically they create like a fairly strong barrier and they can actually be used along flowing, flowing water, like the Bow River, for example, versus tiger dams that are not as efficient when you have a lot of flowing water passing, passing by. And also quite resistant to impacts.
Must be a complicated job emptying those things when you're done with them.
Yes. It's definitely easier to fill than to empty, that's for sure. An example of tiger dams could be used around a, a building. So they were used at some, some point during the 2013 event for the hospital and a few other places. And again, those ones are also great once, if you deploy them before you actually have water, you want to deploy them to protect them before you get the flood. So that's the map and emergency plan for the Bow River. In the report, we also talked about 2018 planned work that we, some capital project that we're looking at doing. One of it is the wastewater treatment plant. The road itself would need to be raised slightly between zero and about a meter in some places to actually increase the, the dike capacity there and potentially remove, remove one of the overtopping location we have. Lift station two A, which is the one by the Spring Creek entrance by the roundabout, that one needs some, a little bit of protection from overland flood. Lift station one, which is the one in South Canmore, which is down here, that one is quite highly visible. So we're talking about doing like what I would call half protection, half permanent protection. The rest would be done most likely with tiger dams during an event. And also pump house, pump house one and lift station two, which is the one at the Benjamins Trails and Bow Valley Trail where we have the Teles tree. Also some more significant burning, burming, burming around it to actually increase the waterproofness of it. And there's also right now, lift station two is being designed and planned to be replaced next year by EPCOR and the entering department is involved with those guys also to ensure that it's quite a bit higher than the current one, so that it's not affected by future And that's basically, there is a capital project for that already approved, I believe. Yes. For this work, but also planning on applying for ACRP funding for this project also in September of this year for this. So in summary, for the Boer River emergency planning, we're, we feel we're now a lot better informed than we used to be. We're doing that seasonal high water monitoring. We have our new emergency response plan and map. A lot of emergency preparedness training and exercises have been happening. We have a much better relationship also with, and communication with AEP, TransAlta, and other external stakeholders. And the provincial study is forthcoming and we'll definitely, we'll definitely look at that intensely and, and see what it means for Canmore and if we want to apply for different other funding to do some other improvements and if we need to potentially change our maps and response plan.
Counselor Sanford, do you have a question?
I did. Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation. I, I wanted to ask a question. Do we own those HESCO dams? Do, do we actually have a bunch of those?
Yeah, we do.
And there was a map shown earlier of the whole side of the Bow River that was protected. Do we have all that protection already? Like, do we own the protection that it takes?
We currently do for that section, yes.
So there's tiger dams, there's all kinds of things in there?
Yeah, I don't know exactly, or the quantities that we have.
We have approximately 500 meters of HESCO that was purchased as part of the emergency preparedness grant a couple of years back. And that's a sufficient quantity to allow us to do a portion of the recommended intervention under certain conditions. Not as that piece of dike that was shown.
So you showed us the image and you have enough to cover that? Okay. I also had a question about raising the road to the wastewater treatment plant. Does your inundation, do your inundation map show what happens if you put a barrier in there? I mean, if, if you add some sort of barrier on the landscape, does that change the water diversion and send it somewhere else?
For the waste, for the road?
For the road.
Uh, no, we don't, we actually don't have modeling of what happens when we do that for that section, but I was recommended by McElhany to actually raise, raise the road there. And I believe that the level of the water there by raising the road to where it, it should probably, it would be better to be, wouldn't affect the other side. It's also a fairly wide area there. And it's downstream of the Boer River Bridge, which is the, the narrowest point really.
Because I understand in High River, they had some issues with putting roads in, raising it, and then water diverted because of that raise.
Yeah.
But you've already considered that on this.
Yeah, and that location again is further downstream of the main Canmore area and also like a much wider area down there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions this time? Seeing none. Did you have any summary points? You jumped up like you wanted to say something.
I, I do want to clarify which section of the wastewater treatment plant road. There are two separate roads, one that runs perpendicular to the river, that accesses off of Bow Valley Trail. We are not proposing to change that one. That could impound flow. It's the one that runs straight north, south from South Canmore. That's proposed to be raised and so there could be flow happening on either side of that without impounding water like the High River example.
Thanks for that. Well, that was all three very interesting and reassuring reports. Clearly, all departments are doing a lot of work for emergency preparedness, which the community will be very happy to know about when they learn about it.
Which was they won't do because there's no press video.
Yeah, so.
The video came on, video was working.
Yeah, but nobody. But it'll be up to Communications Department to get the message out. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate that. We're moving on now to item D six, the town center parking study. Which is Mr. Asarti, who seems to be leaving.
So I can see you not, you're not. I'm assuming she wanted to talk for papers, so.
Good afternoon again, mayor and council. I'm here today with Selby Thanakary of StanTech to discuss the results of the parking study undertaken over the past year. Before I turn it over to Mr. Thanakary, I'll provide a bit of background. Managing traffic congestion and parking in the town center has been a priority of council, with it most recently being one of seven priorities in the 2016 through 2018 strategic plan. This isn't surprising. Canmore is highly desirable as a place for visitors and residents alike, and all great places have a need to manage transportation and parking challenges. We expect that busy roads are here to stay. We do however, want them to be safe, vibrant, and contribute to Canmore's sense of place. Canmore is and always should be a place where people love to work, live, and visit. In 2015, administration worked with the BRZ to develop a parking and traffic management strategy that would address council's priorities with the vision of previous guiding documents such as the Town Center Enhancement Plan, Council Strategic Planning, Transportation Planning, and Land Use Considered. The aim of the strategy is to identify a range of options to manage parking and traffic in order to accommodate growth in local population and tourism. The document touches on overarching philosophies and strategies while providing the town BRZ CBT, formerly CBT, and business owners with specific actions that can be taken over a 10-year timeframe. The goals of the strategy are that we maintain the town center as the heart of the community first. To service the heart of our community, we need an effective transportation network that will deliver those safe, efficient, and vibrant streets with a focus on moving people through prioritizing walking, cycling, and transit in accordance with our transportation plans. Many stakeholders have a role in creating a vibrant and sustainable town center and having a shared vision and a spirit of collaboration is required for us to see that these goals are reached. Though that strategy was the basis for a 2016 capital project, which saw optimization of parking in the town center, it's still in draft form. And so the idea is, as part of that project, a parking study would be completed. This would provide some quantitative data and some recommendations around initiatives that can be undertaken to manage parking and traffic congestion. That would then be incorporated into an updated strategy and then that document will be brought forward at a future time to council after some engagement. And so we went out and hired StanTech through, through our procurement process. And they've now completed the study. And to frame what I see as the key findings of the strategy, of the study, one, that growth is outpacing parking demand, which suggests that our strategies to shift mode are working. And importantly, we have a long lead time on some of these items and we're now going to be seeing things like local transit come to fruition. Spring Creek Drive, complete street project completion, connection to Bow Valley Trail, work, work starting now on railway avenue. So early efforts have yielded fruit and now some of the larger initiatives are, are going to start to also impact reducing demand relative to the growth in tourism and the growth in the community. Another is that programming and space brings out the community. And so we're seeing very high accounts of, of people in the town center during market Thursdays, for example, we're seeing very good use and uptake of the patio program. And so programming and giving space to people has been very effective in bringing out the community and drawing in the community and, and visitors to the town center. And the third is that conditions are in place for considering new initiatives. We have a high occupancy of our parking, so our parking is very well utilized now for longer periods. We have new developments coming with proposals along Veterans Way expected. And there are many new businesses, occupancy of, of the downtown businesses has increased substantially over the past year or two. And so managing how the available parking is used is growing in importance. It's a valuable commodity and we want to make sure that it's used most effectively. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Thanakary to present the findings of the parking study. Good afternoon. So through this presentation, there's a couple of items that I thought I'd cover in the, in the presentation. So just talking a little bit about the study background and some of our parameters, kind of going through our study area, our on-street and off-street parking results, and then moving forwards, potential solutions and a potential implementation strategy for managing parking. And then some time at the end for questions and comments. So some of our objectives, we were tasked with assessing how vehicle parking occupancy has changed since 2007, which is the most recent parking study, looking at both on-street and off-street. Also looking at assessing how vehicle parking durations have changed during that time period. And then unlike the other previous studies, we also looked at bicycle and what we call pedestrian parking, such as benches, and sort of establishing a baseline for what kind of existing demand levels we have for both of those types of modes. And then also looking at developing an implementation strategy for managing the downtown parking. So as I mentioned, some of the previous studies, 1998 and 2001, some of those studies kind of focused on looking at the typical weekday and the typical weekend. 98 and 2001 looked at private and public parking, focused on basically eight AM to five PM time period during the peak periods, which was the summer time period. The 2007 study, very similar, focused on weekday and weekend only, private and public parking. It did extend the time period to seven PM to kind of capture the early evening time period. And then also looked again at the summer, summertime peak period. With this study, what we looked at was the same typical weekend and a typical weekday, but we also expanded it to include a long weekend day. And then we also expanded to include a market Thursday. We did focus on just the public parking component only, not the private. And we basically shifted to a nine AM to five PM period with the exception of the long weekend where we did continue. continue on till seven PM to capture that early evening period. And again, this was during the summertime period, which was the peak period. And we looked at sort of two different areas. We looked at the original area that was done in 2007, but then we also added and expanded area to basically cover Seventh Street from the river to Eighth Avenue, and then also the short segments of Sixth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, and Eighth Avenue between Tenth and Eleventh Street, just to capture what kinda parking spillover might occur outside of that core area and those, those first, first blocks. And there you can kinda visually see the areas that were covered. The red is basically the commonality between the 2007 and the 2016 study, and then the blue is just the expanded areas that we also evaluated. So, in terms of parking inventory, uh, part, available parking remained relatively flat between 2007 and 2016. Uh, what we noted is that, um, because we don't have delineated parking stalls on many of the streets, a lot of the demand and available parking is dictated by the amount of vehicles that can physically fit in a space, so, which is also conducive of how much their efficiency and how they're parking, as well as, uh, the types of vehicles that are appearing. So, if you have a day with a lot of motorcycles, they'll suddenly park more vehicles on that day than a day that's got a lot of RVs. So what we found was that there was a, there was a slight decrease in the, in on-street parking space, but what was offset by a slight increase in off, in off-street parking space, uh, which basically shifts vehicle traffic from on-street areas to off-street areas. Those on-street areas were, um, managed with, uh, added bike corrals to encourage other modes and to encourage parking, but a different type of parking, no longer vehicle parking. And the, and as I mentioned, the number of vehicles parked will vary because of the types of vehicles and the efficiency and how they park within the space. This is just a general map of some of the parking restrictions that we currently had, that we had in place, at least at the time of the study, uh, last summer. Uh, you can see the, the, kinda the range of different parking options and durations that are available throughout that study area. Some general observations that we found as we were going through, particularly around the on-street parking, uh, we did note there was a, there was some driver confusion, uh, between the signage, uh, especially as, as some of the resident, or some of the visitors are not necessarily, um, using English as a first language. There was confusion as to whether or not it was a, a two-hour zone, or a, a longer zone, or a fifteen-minute zone, or loading zone. Uh, actually, our, our staff was asked quite often whether or not they were allowed to park in certain spaces. Uh, we found during those time periods, there was very limited, uh, parking enforcement. Uh, we did see that there were some vehicles that clearly were in violation in terms of parking for longer than the, than the zone allowed, um, but they remained there. Uh, others, we did note some vehicles moving from one location to another to avoid enforcement, so moving their car from one side of the street, or just sliding forward a couple spots to, to restart the parking session. Along the residential areas such as like Seventh and Tenth, what we found was, um, a lot of residents using that, that public parking area along Seventh and Tenth rather than private areas that they may have in the alleys or in private, private driveways or garages. We did also note, since we were studying pedestrians and cyclists, that, uh, where we have some of the cyclist infrastructure, we did have some all-day parking from cyclists as well, so presumably these could be employees, but, um, they had their same bicycle there for the entire parking duration period, which was taken away from some of the parking that could have been turned over to, to other users that might be coming along. Generally, we would say where we see a high turnover, like less than an hour of parking, these suggest pretty short trips, you know, maybe a, a trip to grab a cup of coffee or something like that, um, where this is, these are, we consider them high targets for potential alternative travel modes, so a short trip might be somebody that we can potentially convince through, through different strategies to leave their vehicle at home and maybe travel by a different mode the next time. Anecdotally, we, we had also heard concerns about, um, potential parking spillover from Banff into Canmore, particularly around the transit stop, where people might be using Seventh and Ninth as, uh, basically a car, park and ride lot, and then catching the bus and leaving their vehicle parked there all day. And very similar to the previous studies as well, what we found was the peak occupancy, uh, where we saw peak demand was around the midday period, so kinda around the lunch hour time period. This puts into, some of the language into basically numbers, so as we look at, um, especially around the two middle columns where we've got the same parking area being discussed between 2007 and 2016, you can see on-street parking demand on the, the first one, like on a typical weekday. The 2007 study was around sixty-five percent, and now we're up to about seventy-four percent. Uh, market Thursday, uh, currently it's around eighty-six percent. Uh, it wasn't studied previously, so we don't have a number to compare it to. Typical weekend is, was around sixty-three percent, and now it's around seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent. And on a long weekend day, around eighty to eighty-one percent. Off-street, uh, you can see there, typical weekday eighty-five percent, market Thursday ninety-nine, typical weekend day ninety-five, and then long weekend day, a little over a hundred percent. And you can get over a hundred percent on off-street because you'll have people that don't necessarily park legally or in a marked stall, so they're parking along the edges and, and in other areas. And typically, what we would, what we would say is when we achieve around eighty to eighty-five percent, you've actually achieved maximum or like at-capacity conditions. Um, at that range, you're down to maybe a couple of stalls here and there, um, so to find those stalls, someone might be circulating around, so we, we used for our purposes around eighty percent as that threshold of saying this is kind of at-capacity conditions. This is just an example of kinda how that parking occupancy was achieved during the day. So this is Main Street here, uh, what, what you can kinda see is you're starting the day off, uh, nine AM, already at around between thirty to fifty percent occupancy. Uh, it doesn't take long before you get to around eighty percent, looks like around eleven-thirty, and then it's sustained for pretty much the entire day until about four, four-thirty where it starts to drop off. And you can see the, as well, the pattern is kinda consistent between the different date periods that we evaluated, uh, same peak period and similar patterns. This is Tenth Street, a very similar pattern as well, uh, sort of rising up and then, um, hitting capacity around the midday period, and then a, a slow dropping down as the day progressed into the evening hours. In the parking lots, this is Seventh Street, uh, same pattern, um, hitting occupancy right around lunch hour or shortly thereafter, uh, and then staying fairly busy, uh, for the most part of the day. And then Ninth Street, uh, very similar pattern as the others. So as we look at parking duration, so comparing the different studies, in particular, uh, if we look at the 2007 study and this study, uh, 2007 weekday parking duration was around sixty-nine minutes, and now we're up to about eighty minutes. On a weekend, we held fairly steady. It was seventy-three minutes, and now it's seventy-four minutes, so suggesting a very similar pattern of on the weekends. On weekdays, people are staying in the downtown area for a longer duration. And then you can see on market Thursday and a long weekend, again, no, no previous data, so this was sort of the base conditions that we found, uh, where we found about eighty-seven minutes on a market Thursday, so the longest duration of all the time periods. And then a long weekend was actually very similar to a typical long weekend, as well as the, the previous study. So, some of our findings, uh, in general, um, market Thursday did have the highest overall occupancy rates, followed by the long weekend day. Uh, market Thursday had the longest parking durations. Uh, market Thursday, a typical weekend day and a typical weekend, uh, a long weekend day, uh, suggests, uh, we're hitting maximum parking occupancy within the study area. Uh, Saturday parking demand has increased, uh, based on percentages, but the durations have held fairly steady. And weekend parking demand is, has remained flat from 2007, but durations have increased from sixty-nine to eighty minutes. We also noted that, uh, pedestrian and bicycle parking demand was exceeding the available infrastructure, and the way we measured that was to look at, um, how many vehicle, how many bicycles were no longer parking and, or attaching themselves to stalls. So the, the corrals are full, but now stop signs or, or signs nearby, uh, fences, other objects are being used to, to, for people to chain their bicycles up. And on the pedestrian side, people leaning on objects near benches that are full, uh, sitting, sitting on trees, or, or sitting on the grass underneath the trees, or sitting on rocks, uh, all are indications that excess, excess demand and there isn't available infrastructure. So as we looked at our potential mitigation solutions, um, some of the driving questions we've, uh, considered, what do we want our community to be, and what do we want, how do we want Canmore to be experienced, visitors and residents? And we also noted that as we look at potential mitigation strategies, that if they result in modal changes, then there may be other things that are triggered. So for example, um, more bike and pedestrian traffic would mean potentially the need for adding more bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Uh, if some of the parking is, bicycle parking, for example, is being used by staff, uh, certainly everyone has a, has a sense that they wanna have their bicycle secured and, you know, eyes on it and make sure that it's, that it's still there, so being able to provide secured areas for staff to, to park their bicycles and potentially the rear of storefronts. Uh, incentives to encourage, uh, employees to bike and walk, uh, incentives for visitors for alternative modes. Connecting businesses, uh, easy example would be connecting, uh, facilities like hotels with bike share programs, so that once they arrive at a hotel, uh, in a vehicle, they've got the option to switch to a different mode and be able to access the downtown area without having to drive their vehi-- vehicle. And then also being mindful of alternative travel, such as Uber, uh, bicycle rickshaws, and other, and other programs that people might, uh, want to consider as, as part of that modal change. So as we looked at the mitigation measures, some of the, uh, timeframes that we put, uh, were approximate, but, uh, we do recommend, um, creating a uniform time restricted parking. Uh, it could be implemented as early as this year and into next year, where we uniform, uh, create a uniform time period of four-hour parking within that downtown core area. Uh, this would allow people to, to reasonably shop and, and use other facilities there. Uh, we looked at, uh, shorter durations, but the challenges can be, uh, people maybe sort of cutting off their, their day to, to go feed a meter or move their vehicle because they feel like they're, they're gonna get ticketed, or the two hours is, is not enough. So the four hours seem to be a comfortable zone to, to balance between parking demand and, and incentives for businesses. Uh, and then also recognizing as well that there are areas and potential needs for longer terms, such as eight-hour parking, uh, but now focusing that more on the periphery. So along Seventh Street, for example, uh, maybe allowing that to be eight-hour parking where it's currently unrestricted all-day parking. Uh, it's still a reasonable walking distance to downtown, but it gives you that, that longer duration. We also suggested, uh, potentially, say, uh, delineated on-street parking stalls. So where we have parking lanes right now, where, as I mentioned, we get different efficiencies based on how people choose to park, but having delineated stalls will sort of help us to control exactly how people park, um, if you've got RVs parking in downtown, uh, which we did see a couple, uh, having delineated stalls might encourage them to park elsewhere, might focus vehicles to, and manage them to, to kinda know where exactly they should park to, to most efficiently make use of that parking la area. Uh, also in 2017, as a potential pilot, and then 2018, potential implementation would be a decal program. This has been done in several municipalities, uh, across North America, but essentially you would have an escalating decal price. Uh, this, again, only applies to, to public on-street parking, so if you, if you live in the area and you're parking your driveway or in your garage, you, you're fine. This is if you're needing to park your vehicle on an on-street area. So an example might be, uh, using an escalating structure, maybe a hundred dollars for the first decal, and it's good for a year, but then your second vehicle that you need to decal for is two hundred, a third one is four hundred, and a fourth one is eight hundred. Uh, again, not, these are just example prices, but what you want is, is a, an escalating scale to kinda, it, to at least encourage people to, to reconsider using those private areas that they already have, rather than relying on the public supply of, of parking. Uh, paid parking as well is another option to consider for 2018, 2019. Uh, you could set up zones, um, you could do, we mentioned meters, but it can be any number of new technologies as well. Uh, there's a lot of smartphone apps and providers that manage parking through, um, a, a zone number, and you type in the zone number, and, and it's linked to your credit card, and, and you pay, and it gives you a countdown for when you run out of parking, and when you return to your vehicle, you, you turn it off and, and you stop being charged. But then also basing the fares based on the demand area, so along Main Street where, where parking might be more of a premium, offering a, suggesting a higher fare for that, those areas versus other areas. And then also giving an incentive such as, um, businesses potentially offering parking fee waivers. So, you know, if they come and shop in their, in, in a store and spend twenty dollars, the parking fee is waived the next time that they arrive, and they can use that as a, as an incentive to bring customers back, but then also to recoup, um, people that are paying for parking to, to get some money back and get some revitalization in, in some business areas.
Just before you go on to that, the last, on the last slide, yeah? Thought I'd read in the report that the Decal Program would take six months or something to get up and running.
Potentially, yes. Uh, it, it, it can depend on which vendors you go with, um, there's a lot of logistical things to sort out in terms of, is it a hanging decal, is it a sticker program? Find the right vendor, how many decals do you order? Uh, what's the enforcement like? Is it a barcode that enforcement uses a, a scan gun to, to, to manage? Uh, what kind of durations do you wanna have? Uh, so it can certainly be, be set up fairly quickly. Rolling it out as a full program can take a little bit longer, uh, so it, it can kinda depend on which options you, you select as you go through.
Given we're already into the summer of 2017, it seems unlikely that we could do a 2017 pilot?
You might be able to set up the infrastructure, I think. You, you might be able to select a vendor and maybe potentially look at what kinda zones you wanna have defined and, and where you wanna have a pilot project, and maybe it, what it is, is it setting it up for a, a January first rollout of a, of a pilot project for a particular area, and then expanding it from there, depending on how it goes.
Okay, thank you. Council McCallum?
Thank you, worship. Just to dovetail off of, uh, the mayor's questions, with the Decal Program, are you focusing that mitigation to just downtown, or is that something that could be recommended to be used in neighborhoods in which perhaps there's, um, parking issues?
I've seen it used in both places. It's certainly expandable, you can set up zones in, in a number of different wa-- areas. In areas that I worked in, in North America, in Virginia, for example, um, parking around high schools was always an issue, uh, where high schools had to pay for parking, so students parked in the residential areas nearby. So, the program was set up to discourage students from parking in residential areas and taking, taking up that space. So I think there's a number of ways you can roll it out. You can, you can use it basically as a program to manage parking, uh, in any number of given situations.
Interesting, thank you.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, uh, looking at local transit services, we did note that, uh, through information that, that the town provided, that introduction of fares had decreased ridership, so we did suggest, uh, maybe returning to free fares to increase ridership levels again. Uh, and then also looking at, uh, and considering additional local routes that could be used to serve different areas that currently aren't covered. With the fares, what we, you know, especially with the paid parking implementation, the current trade-off was, you, you have a choice between paying for, for a transit fare or free parking in downtown, uh, and a driver may choose to, to take the free parking, but when you reen-- you kinda turn that equation around when you start to look at free fares on transit and then paying for parking that might actually result in greater ridership than, than what was previously recorded with free fares, um, previously. So, we, we did recommend that as, as another incentive to, to encourage non-vehicular traffic and travel modes. And then we also looked at, uh, a parcade structure. Uh, our recommendation was not to put it to a timeframe, but to consider it more of a long-term option, uh, seeing how some of the other considerations and strategies work. Uh, some of the things with a parcade structure to consider, uh, you do have a seventy-five year life cycle, most often with most parcade structures to consider. Uh, it's an interesting time right now with a lot of emerging technology, uh, that may end up, may end up resulting in a diminished need for, for parcade structures, uh, looking at self-driving cars, autonomous cars, uh, Uber services. Uh, currently, the up-and-coming generation is, is noted as having the, the lowest vehicle ownership rates amongst every other previous generation, so car share programs may diminish the need of, of a parcade structure. Uh, and then, uh, and then as I mentioned, you have the ride share programs. That was the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Well, if other councils have any specific questions? In the report, um, page, I don't see a page number, two-point-four, I guess it is. Just talk about the... Just talk about the, overall parking supplies increased within the downtown area. So did the number of vehicles using the available parking, which I suppose is not surprising. So the first bullet there, parking occupancy has disproportionately increased for the typical week, weekday and typical weekend day. Can you just speak a bit more about that? Explain, so disproportionately in what, in what way? The top of 2.4, page 2.4?
Yes, so that was relating back to how volumes have changed on some of the roadways in surrounding areas with, with consideration of how the population has increased. What we see is those levels have increased at, at a very dramatic level while, while parking has changed at a slightly different level. What we see here as well, and this is, is also a reference back to kind of how we evaluated the parking occupancy. So again, this is how people are efficiently parking. So people are parking more efficiently, that's one explanation. Vehicle, vehicle types may have as well changed during that from 2007 to 2016. So what we see is a, is a fairly, more, more efficient parking system that it's essentially being self-managed in the sense that people are parking more efficiently because they, I guess they sense a, an increased demand for that parking, so. And the duration as well, what we saw in previous studies is, is a peak period around the lunch hour and then a drop-off before and a drop-off afterwards versus now we see a sustained period of, of parking occupancy, which is just higher demand.
Okay, thank you. The, your section 4.2.8 around intercept parking lots. Have you worked in other communities where that's been introduced? And it's curious how it's worked. We, we talked a little bit about intercept parking here, but more directed to visitors to Camor and getting them to park far away from the core and requiring shuttle service, but this, this sounds to be a little bit different than that.
This, given the unique area, there's a couple of different applications of it. You could use intercept parking lots if you're running shuttle services to send workers there if they're, if they're working in Banff, for example, and they, they can't find parking there. They could potentially be redirected to use the intercept lot instead of one of the parking lots within the downtown area. If you're a day visitor from Calgary, for example, same situation, you could, they could be directed to use the intercept lot and then have shuttle services run from, from those areas to, to the downtown area. We've seen this used in a couple of different places. I worked for four years in, in Northern Virginia, just outside DC where we have now the worst traffic in, in the United States. And so we had a lot of sort of ad hoc intercept lots set up around the Beltline area just outside DC where people would, would sort of form carpool areas and then, and then it's four to a car to, to go into the downtown area. So essentially functioning as an intercept lot to, to reduce vehicle demand and parking demand in, in the DC area.
They're not, it's not recommended, recommended for any sort of implementation until sometime in the future. So, so a lot of the, it seems a lot of the work we're doing right now and talking about doing the immediate future is directed around managing to a large extent, local drivers. I mean, if, if we hold off on the intercept parking for four or five years, I don't know where I'm going with this question, but it could be that doing that more immediately could relieve a lot of the demand that we're trying to address in a number of smaller ways in the downtown core. And it could be the intercept parking is closer to downtown around the TransCanada and it's actually intercept for Camor residents coming in from Three Sisters or whatever that could park in an intercept parking lot off of railway or something rather than parking downtown.
For, for an intercept lot to be attractive, you have to, as a person arriving at the community or a local choosing to use it, you have to have an incentive to park your car and then walk or wait for a shuttle bus in order to, to get to the downtown. With some of the initiatives that are proposed, that incentive grows over time, but it's going to have to be quite an attractive intercept lot to get people to actually do that. Human behavior is going to be to come to as close to the destination as possible. For locals, the intercept lot is their garage, their parking, their driveway and their on-street parking. For overnight visitors, the intercept lots are the parades and parking lots built for hotels and accommodation. So giving those groups of people really great connectivity options and then creating some incentive for them to leave the car home now is going to free up some parking in the town center for the day trip visitors who don't have an intercept lot option. As we monitor the performance of these mitigation approaches, we'll reach a point where now an option for a visitor is to pay for some highly utilized downtown parking or park in preferably a very attractive intercept lot, maybe a short walking distance as you suggested, if you could find something in that vicinity. So I think it's important we start the planning work for that, identify the location, identify how it's going to be connected and show how it's going to be well-connected to the town center. Do that work now, but we have a number of other opportunities with transit and complete streets and, and the initiatives around how parking's used downtown that we can implement in the meantime as we're planning towards an intercept lot or a parcade.
Good answer, thank you. Councilor Sanford?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I had a question for you about the observation you made about bicycle, bicycles being chained to trees, et cetera. Does that, was that observation made within the range of an existing piece of infrastructure or was that just, there's no bicycle?
It, it was both. So in the range, along Main Street, for example, where we saw where there are bike facilities, there were people that, those, those facilities were full and then people were resorting to other objects elsewhere. And then other areas, we saw places where there was no infrastructure, but there's a demand for it. So we saw people biking or parking their, or attaching their bikes to trees and other objects. So it was, it was both.
Okay. And in your report, you suggested something about motorcycles. Is it advisable to have motorcycle parking specifically in an area since you mentioned that they're not used in the winter?
I think the challenge can be when those vehicles are not there, that space becomes underutilized. So having a dedicated motorcycle parking space, for example, if there isn't a motorcycle there, it becomes, it becomes space that's waiting for a motorcycle to arrive. Drivers may, that are using motorcycles may, they may want to go to different places within the downtown core. So it becomes difficult to try and predict exactly where they may want to go. So we recommend instead, you know, having delineated parking stalls that are generally made for motorcycle or a passenger vehicle or, or a pickup truck that can, can serve both purposes and then be utilized in both ways.
Okay, thank you. I did have one more question. Mostly to do with some of the transition of our parking spaces into in-street patios. Has there been any kind of evaluation on that or is that because it's evolving, it's not part of the study?
No formal evaluation of how that space was used. Anecdotally, we did see a lot of people in those, in those spaces, but there wasn't a, a formal evaluation of how that space was being.
But the in-street patios have reduced our parking?
Correct.
That's the question I'm asking, yeah.
Yes, the in-street patios have reduced some parking stalls, that's correct.
And is that reflected in the report at all?
It is. It's, when we look at the, the parking demand, that's the on-street slight decrease that we noted related to some of those losses accumulating where we, we were having that loss of a certain number of parking stalls. That ends up also reflecting in why we also have slightly higher occupancy rates. So we have same, there might be same demand, but the occupancy rate appears higher because you're dealing with it in a smaller space. So 130 vehicles say in, in a place where there's space for 150 parking stalls is the same demand as 130 vehicles in a space for 130 stalls. So the rates go up, but the demand is the same.
Okay, because I just noticed in your report, you talked about an increase in parking because there was some parking added by a new parking lot?
Yes, and the way we measured it was, was related to sort of how efficiently people are parking. So that can vary. It's, it's a methodology that was used as well in the 2007 study. So it's, it's a comparable methodology in, in how we compared how demand has, has changed. But we know as well that there's an efficiency in how people parked as well as how, what types of vehicles they happen to be using that day and, and just sort of how they, how they're using parking. So people have found a way to be more efficient, but there is, and some stalls that appear to have been added as well along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McCallum?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Sarti, you mentioned earlier, and I heard you use these words a couple of times with regards to intercept parking, you use the term very attractive. So what does very attractive, what, outside of distance, which you also addressed, what does very attractive mean in terms of municipal investment?
I, I think if you're coming to the community and we're talking a nice, long weekend or there's an event that you're coming to attend, very attractive means efficient, if it, people make decisions on efficiency first, any transportation decision. So that comes to the proximity and also how direct it is for people if they're going to walk. It makes shuttling difficult because you have to provide a very, very high level of service with a shuttle in order to get a person to park their car, wait or walk to a shuttle terminal. So efficiency is number one. Beyond that, we have an opportunity here, depending on where the intercept parking's located, to provide an experience between the lot and the destination that matches with the reason that a person's coming to Camor. So if they're walking along a nice creek or along a nice pathway or they're getting some good views of the mountain and experiencing the reason they came to Camor, you can certainly get a person to walk five or 10 minutes along an attractive route. They need to be steered towards that intercept parking by something. So if there's an available parking spot downtown and it's five bucks, they're probably going to take that one. People have a high tolerance for paid parking if it's convenient, especially if they're visiting somewhere. So the financial piece obviously would have to be free to encourage people to use it, especially if the parking rates in the downtown are low. So those are the considerations you have. And then you have a parking lot that when it's not peak time and there's not overflow, how is that space going to be, be used? Is it really just an overflow? And if it is, then we're still talking about a space that's quite close to the town center that you're dedicating for, for partial use for parking purposes. So those are all things to think about when we're planning for an intercept lot. What space would we like to use and how attractive is it? It has to be attractive for it to be successful.
Thank you very much. Great answer.
Councilor Russell?
Thank you. I apologize if I've missed it, but I didn't see any refer, I didn't note any references to how we park tour buses. It's becoming more and more of an occurrence where the, the tour bus comes in, drops his 47 passengers and you often find them now, part, one bus takes up the whole side street or one bus, two buses takes up most of a block, but we've, we've seemed to have not addressed that.
I'll speak to it in terms of the implementation strategy and then I'll allow Mr. Thannakary to speak from a technical perspective. In, in the strategy we developed with the BRZ in 2015, we have a, a section in there that says accommodate tour buses. If they're bringing 47 people, that's 47 people that are arriving and bringing a bunch of business activity with a fairly compact footprint. In terms of how we do that, that part hasn't been thought through. So right now we have a bus zone on 10th, but it only allows for short duration and then they have to go find a place somewhere in the community to park. From discussion with the BRZ, this is something that we are seeing grow and so certainly we need to address it. In terms of how that's done, perhaps you have some thoughts on that, but it would be something to, to work on in this next stage of work.
Because we're seeing the evolution already, the tour buses are evolving into an ad hoc parking lot on Bow Valley Trail across from hotels. It's becoming a practice, not just a random event anymore.
So I, what I can comment on it is, I mean, there is, there's a demand that would be created with, for parking from, from tour buses, you know, having a place where they can conveniently park and, and maybe a place where they can first drop off and then, and then park and wait, potentially in an area outside of the downtown core, I think would certainly be positive steps. We didn't include it in this law, in this study, but I think you could kind of roll that into calling it basically like an intercept parking lot for tour buses to, to then go and utilize while they're not in active parking or picking, picking up or dropping off activity.
I guess to your point, counselor, if they're parking in that empty lot up on the Bow Valley Trail, that's not a bad solution, they're not parking downtown, which is good.
I, I guess it's a good, it's, it's a Band-Aid solution and it's, you know, if we're trying, we work, as we work on trying to develop our, our image and the positive impressions, he and a couple of buses parked off in the bush, isn't necessarily what we want to be. I, I think there's, I respect your point, but I think there, we, we got to do something a little better.
Go consider.
One last question and it's not, it's for Mr. Sarti. In your report, you note at the very beginning that the study outlines a number of initiatives to be undertaken by the BRZ. I'm not clear, it's not clear which initiatives you were referring to.
Goes back to the goals beyond, beyond physical parking. So this is more speaking to the vibrancy of the town center, it being a, a space for people. So that comes down to things like the patio initiatives that businesses are undertaking that's contributing to the vibrancy and, and the people space downtown. It's around incentivizing employees to use transit, to walk and cycle. The great thing about fare-free transit is it's essentially a free transit pass for all employees, all visitors, all residents, which is, as we talked through the opportunities, that was one of the things. What if the businesses all purchased a pass for their employees? Well, once you get to that point, you're not too far off of being able to, to fund fare-free for the entire community. So encouraging walking and cycling, encouraging all-day parking on the periphery, offering incentives to customers for walking and cycling through the bike-friendly business program. There's a, a piece for the larger destination marketing. All, a lot of our hotels and accommodations are within one, two, three kilometers. We have most of our accommodations within that distance of the town center. As we start to create better experiences through the infrastructure for those visitors, it's a no-brainer for hotels to be promoting their guests to be walking downtown. If you think about the experience walking from the Bow Valley today versus where it might be in a, a year or two, it's not going to make sense to, to park downtown from Bow Valley. It's going to make a lot of sense on a nice day to, to walk over or maybe they have as a few of the smaller B and Bs and hotels are looking at now have bikes for their guests. So promoting walking and cycling, promoting transit use, managing employee use of parking. If you look at some of the occupancies, there's very high early morning occupancy, which suggests a lot of employee parking right now. And so with the availability of trend, local transit now, I, I think there's going to be a need for a push for us as a community, as a business community to really encourage people to start using those alternatives.
Well, thank you very much for being here today, Mr. Thannakary, and presenting the report. One last question for Mr. Sarti, so, just so we're prepared, what are the next steps for implementation and how will council be involved in, in that?
What, what we've proposed is now that we have some recommendations around the initiatives, that we have some ongoing engagement with the BRZ. So an additional couple of meetings to talk about the traffic network and talk about these. So, an additional couple of meetings to talk about the traffic network, and talk about these initiatives, to talk about updating the strategy in general. So, looking at those things that businesses will do, and that the municipality will do, and update that plan. There's a need for any initiative that would directly impact stakeholders. So, residents downtown, businesses downtown, residents just outside of downtown, residents who come and work in the downtown. If there are initiatives that are proposed that are going to impact them, some form of engagement, information sharing, I think is important there, and hearing from them concerns, so that the strategies can be tailored to address them. So, for example, someone says, "I live in Exha, and I work downtown, and now four-hour restrictions don't work for me." What's the solution to that? Or, "I live downtown, and I have one dedicated parking stall in my condo. I have three vehicles." How is this going to work for me? So, thinking through what that's going to mean for people directly impacted, and doing some engagement around that. And then, general informing of the public at large on the parking study results and the proposed initiatives. Based on that work, we update the strategy, and bring forward some more concrete recommendations with impacts and costs tied to it sometime in the fall. And then, that would be the basis for council providing feedback on that strategy, ultimately adopting that strategy for planning purposes. And that's the basis for approving transit initiatives, capital projects, and future work around the parking strategy.
Great. So, all of the proposed implementation strategies that are recommended would be coming back to council for further discussion in the fall?
Correct.
Counselor Sanford?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just further to community engagement. Is it possible for the town to send out a survey to all town employees to find out how they get to work, and whether they're parking full day downtown?
For sure.
Is that something that's doable?
Yeah, it'd be quite interesting, actually.
Yeah, because it would be interesting to know how many cars are actually coming to this building. Since this building was built downtown, to encourage people to come downtown, now we're seeing that it has a different impact than what was expected.
Can I, we actually have done that in the not-so-distant future. Patrick Sorfleet sent one out when they were, I forget the planning initiative, but we have done surveys of civic center staff before to have that information. Certainly, we could do it again, but it has been done. It's something that has been monitored.
Well, now that we have transit, I think that would be a different set of data that would be interesting to know, so.
It'd be very interesting. Anecdotally, I've seen quite a large shift. And if you think about, we had no bicycle parking outside in the back. It's routinely filled now. Lots of people are using transit anecdotally. So, it'd be interesting to see if we had a comparison.
Right. And I just had another question for you about the parking in Lou. When you mentioned that some condo complexes have one spot and three cars, there are some condo complexes downtown that paid for parking in Lou on the street, right? So, they don't have any parking spots at all, but they actually paid to have access to that. So, we need to somehow determine what that evaluation is, too.
Parking cash in Lou is paying out of an obligation to provide parking. It's not paying for designated parking?
Right, but people have to park somewhere. I mean, those people don't have designated parking inside their condo complex. So, they need to park on the street, right?
So, they're not necessarily entitled, but they certainly do need to be addressed in any of this. And so, maybe that's part of the DECO program, where they're able to purchase passes for an annual pass that would allow them to have a parking stall. But, it would be within the larger system.
Yeah, so they're not entitled to it, but there was an agreement made a long time ago to allow for it. Yeah.
To allow the builder not to build parking. Right, but then the builder's accepting the fact that future tenants will have to find parking wherever they can.
In order to develop a larger square footage, the developer would do that only if they saw a benefit for their development. Now, they're, I know the specific unit, now they're renting a unit without parking to their tenants without designated parking, so that, there was a decision made not to build onsite parking, but to have units where there wouldn't be designated onsite parking. Those tenants move to the downtown with that knowledge and understanding, just as someone with one designated spot moves with two or three vehicles. That's where it's important to start implementing restrictions, so that the people who are making those decisions know that there's at least a restriction around it, or a price to be paid if they move to the downtown with three cars, and they only have one designated spot. That's a decision that they're making, knowing that there's a price attached to that for a DECO program.
Okay, well, thank you both, gentlemen, for being here today. Given the time, we'll move fairly quickly through the remaining agenda. Agenda item E1, council updates. I'll just throw the floor open to anybody who has any question about any of the other counselors' reports. And I see none. We'll move on to item F1, the service area reports. I don't have any burning questions.
Counselor Russell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just on the report about elevation place achieving LEED Silver Confirmation, that's kind of nice, but did we pay for that certification? It's under facilities report.
Mr. Fark?
So, yes, there was a fee attached with the certification. This was a process that started at the design stage of the building, and the decision and the process to seek the LEED certification was part of the original project.
Okay, I apologize then, but I thought from relying on memory, and I'll go back and look, because the idea was to shadow lead and not actually pay the cost for the, I may be misunderstanding, but I thought we were going to avoid that cost.
That's not my recollection, Counselor Russell. We did a shadow lead on the daycare building.
Maybe I'm confusing the two. I just.
Yeah. That's my recollection as well.
Counselor McCallum?
And I'm not sure where, there was a mention here about removal of trees on, I think maybe on Bow Valley Trail. Pardon me? 141? Thank you. Anyways, my question was, I actually had a call from constituents saying that they saw some trees that were being removed on Bow Valley Trail. Were that, was that on a town right-of-way, or was that on private property? And it was because they are, gotcha. Thank you very much.
As is noted, actually, in the service area report, the intent is we will replace the trees, replant, once the, yes, once the work is complete.
Counselor Sanford?
Thank you, Your Worship. I had a question further on that tree replacement. It's suggesting that, from what I understand, that there's going to be a replacement of equal diameter. So, if you take out, well, that's what it says in here. So, if you take out a 30-centimeter tree, so, you're going to replace it with four 7.5-centimeter diameter trees?
Correct.
That's, so, you're going to replace the equal diameter with, one tree of equal diameter with four trees, offsetting.
You lost me on the math on the last piece, but generally, yes. Where older, larger trees are removed, it's not possible or practical to replace a single tree as large. So, generally, the smaller the tree is, the more likely it will grow and succeed. The difficulty is, is that if you planted 31-centimeter diameter trees, you're really not achieving much. So, the example of four 7.5-centimeter diameter trees that might be two or three meters tall, over time, would grow up.
Okay, I think I just misread that. So, it's a combination of trees that will replace that 30-centimeter tree?
Yes, exactly. Combination of smaller diameter trees that would add up to the previous diameter.
That's great, thank you.
One question for engineering. Project 1637, the Benchland Trail rehabilitation. So, the project is going to mill an overlay asphalt from the new roundabout down to the Mountain Skills Park. And that's the same process that was done on that stretch about 10 years ago? Is that correct?
The process done 10 years ago was a surface treatment. This is a milling down of two inches of the existing asphalt.
So, quite a bit deeper than was done?
Correct. No milling was done previously. If I recall correctly, it was a surface application of a binding agent that went directly on the existing asphalt to seal the cracks.
So, this process would, what kind of lifespan would it expect?
Near to the original asphalt, so we could expect 20 years, typically for that type of treatment.
Great, thanks very much. Any other questions for the service area reports? Counselor Sanford?
Thank you. Can I just ask one more question about that? Some of the diagrams that were provided with the Benchlands Trail. You've got some surfaces in here. Are those raised surfaces? Like, are those medians, or? The yellow, the yellow sections there, are those pavement markings, or are those raised surfaces?
Modular island?
The modular island, yeah.
These yellow units, those are modular, modular concrete, precast units. They are about three meters long, one meter wide, and sit six inches above the asphalt.
And so, you're creating an island in the middle of Benchlands Trail for people to stop at? Like, to walk partway across the road?
An island would have to be a minimum of two and a half meters in order for it to be a refuge for people to stop at. We didn't have the budget to be able to widen out the road to be able to create that refuge. And the compromise was to do lane narrowing on Benchlands Trail by creating a double striping in the median. That's a meter wide. And so, those yellow lines will continue, it's a little hard to see in this plan, but those yellow lines will continue for the full length from the roundabout all the way down to the splitter island as you approach the Benchlands Overpass. And so, what it'll do is it'll keep the vehicular traffic to the outside. And at the discrete locations of the crossings, these modular units will be put in with the paddle similar to what's on Bow Valley Trail, splitter islands, just to highlight the crossing location. The intent is it's small enough that it doesn't feel to the pedestrian as though it's a place where they can refuge. And it's not intended to be a place to stop while traffic goes on both sides. So, the approaching vehicles need to stop in both directions for the full crossing.
So, is it like a speed bump, or, I mean, is it, it's six inches off the pavement?
Just discreetly in that median. So, between those two yellow lines, those little concrete pieces will sit, like a splitter island would.
And then, on one of those pictures, you have a fairly large piece of concrete that says, yeah, that gray one there? What's that going to be?
So, this is an example where this crossing warrants, presently, there's the flashing signals here, but this crossing warrants having that refuge in the middle. And so, the budget that was approved for the crossing enhancements, or the intersection improvements, included the ability to do this work. And so, that crossing does create a proper refuge of two and a half meters wide that will allow pedestrians to stop in the middle and have vehicles on either side.
And the part around the corner, is that? The curve, is that added, or is that just exactly the same as it is now? It's not widening? Nothing's widening there? Yeah, the amber part around the corner?
Presently, can you hear me? Come over here. Presently, the crossing is up near the road here, and it's quite long. It's 16 or 17 meters long. The idea with this improvement is to set the crossing back a full car length. So, a car now will yield to the crossing, then move forward into the position where they're only now dealing with the vehicle traffic. The crossing setback, this is actually shown as raised, but it's quite subtle, the great difference, three inches. So, at the speeds that vehicles are traveling, it's not going to be very noticeable. It's not going to be like the SOBs. And these curb extensions have been created to narrow that crossing from what would have otherwise been 12 meters down to eight meters. So, that reduces the amount of exposure that people crossing have to vehicular traffic. And it also slows the turning movements. Right now, we've got quite large radii there. What you see here is a tighter radii for right-turning passenger vehicles, and then a larger radii that allows the bus and fire trucks to roll their rear wheels over that apron, which would be similar to what there is at the roundabout.
Is there going to be any community engagement on that part?
There will be informing. We're presently updating the website to include a project page that has the rationale for the changes that are being made, and to include diagrams in there, and that'll be pushed out on social media as well.
So, those yellow lines are just pavement markings, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And the yellow bulbs are going to be?
Just discreet locations that are slightly raised.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussions related to the service area reports? Seeing none. Let's go to council resolution action list. Any questions on that? If there are none, any questions related to the Bow Valley Regional Housing Bulletin?
Counselor McCallum?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd just like to provide an update since this has been provided. The deficiency period with the current contractor is going on much longer than expected. There were 50 pages of deficiencies provided. And so, at this point, it looks like we will not be able to move residents into the lodge until September. And I just wanted to let everyone know, it is as, from, the good news from a provincial perspective is that the budget has been within 3% of the contingency, which is pretty tight. But, yeah, the deficiency period is running a lot longer. We want to make sure that everything is tip-top before, and then it's another six to eight weeks before we can, to be able to commission the building, to have the staff properly trained in that. So, I thought I would let council be aware if they have received any questions from the public.
Thanks for that, because when I read the bulletin, I, it inferred something had changed like that?
Yeah.
Perfect. Are there any other questions this time? Seeing none, I'll move the committee of the hall be adjourned. Those in favor, opposed, or adjourned.